Number seven, twenty twenty-three. City Hall complex, city council chamber seven, 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 North Grand Avenue, Nogales, Arizona, eight, five, six, two, one. Now we go to. Pledge of allegiance. We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item number three, call to the public. Pursuant to A R S thirty-eight, four, thirty-one dash zero, one G, the planning and zoning commission may make an open call to the public during a public meeting. Individual members may respond to criticism made by those who have addressed the committee, may ask staff to review a matter or ask that a member matter be put on future agenda. Members of the planning and zoning commission shall not discuss or take legal actions on matters raised during an open call to the public unless the matters have been properly noticed on the agenda for discussion and legal action. Item number four, approval of the minutes of the last meeting.
Mister Chair, we don't have the minutes yet. Yeah, we don't have it yet.
Okay, we will dispense with the approval because there is no, no record of last meeting. Item number five, declaration by the chair that a quorum is present to consider the following items: selection of planning commission chairman for twenty twenty-four and consideration and possible action of planning and zoning item, consideration and possible action of a rezoning request application by property owners Isabel and Claudia Puig of parcel one, zero, three, dash, zero, nine, dash, zero, thirty-eight, located at two, zero, five, East Price Hill Road. This request is to rezone a portion, parentheses, two point nine, seven acres, parentheses, from a nine point two, nine acres of undeveloped land from single-family residential, dash, twelve, parentheses, S F R twelve, to light industrial, parentheses, L I. Mister Tapia, would you call role of officers?
Mike Lopez.
Here.
Here.
Oscar Santa Cruz.
Absent.
He's absent, Mister Chair, because it's a lot of town. Jesus Lorenzo Marquez.
Present.
Jesus Gomez.
Present.
Bobby Estango. Good. You have a quorum.
And Mike?
Yeah, he said yes.
Okay. Of. For questions of voting, there is for, three members present and one on the phone. For questions of voting, the majority will be three members with a y. Okay. Item number five, point one, selection of planning commission chairman for twenty twenty-four. Do I entertain? A name?
What nominations?
Yeah. Yeah, first, Chair, we nominate one person, a share and also a bi-share.
And this will be effective on the beginning of twenty twenty-four?
Yes, that's correct.
Is your position that you hold right now, the chair?
Yes.
Okay, so you work, and can I ask, may I ask question of the chair? Or is your time up? Are you going to be asked? Because I know this is on a timely schedule, how members participate, am I correct? Are you still gonna be around?
I'll be, I'll be a member of the planning and zoning commission.
Okay, okay, so is there any, can he continue like this?
Yes, you can nominate again.
Okay, that was my question, I didn't know, okay.
Yeah, the expiration date for Mister Gomez will be until June twenty twenty-five.
Okay, because I know we all have expiration dates.
Yes.
Meaning about this one in particular, right? Whichever comes first, no? Um, okay, so my question to you is this, would you like to continue in your role?
I will serve with honor.
Okay, very good, that's good to know. I nominate Jesus to continue in his role and.
Any seconds?
If anybody has other.
Mike, are you, um? Any comments, Mike?
No comments yet, that is fine.
No comment, I agree, I approve.
So the vote, so you're voting for, to select, continue the share? You say yeah.
Like that, yeah. Is it an agreement, is it a one year, it's once a year?
Once a year, yes.
Okay, okay, so basically your last year or your be acting as a decision?
Are they any other nominations? Are they any other nomination?
Nope.
Are they any other nomination? Mister Tapia, would you cast a unanimous vote for the new member for twenty twenty-four?
I can have a roll call.
Thank you. Item number two, consideration and possible action of planning and zoning item, consideration and possible action of rezoning request application by property owners Israel and Claudia Puig of parcel one, zero, three, dash, zero, nine, zero, three, eight, located at two, zero, five, East Prince Price Hill Road. This request is to rezone a portion, nine point nine, seven acres total, from nine, two, nine acres of undeveloped land from single-family residential, dash, twelve, S F, S F R twelve, to light industrial, L I. Under call to the public, I'm gonna go back to call to the public and Mister and Misses Puig, would you like to tell us something about your project?
Can you go to, can you go to the? Mister Chair also.
Just state your name and your address and, and the mic.
Mister Chair, I also have a presentation after this, this pick.
My name is Israel Puig, I live at block thirty, North Sherpy Avenue, here in Nogales, Arizona. I have a petition on rezoning, I might, property located at two, five, East Price Hill Road. We need a light industrial zoning group to storage construction for my family's construction business purpose. The rezoning action. Actually. Actually, it's residential zoning and we need the light industrial for a permanent purpose for my building, I want to construction. This property is adjusted on the south with Mister Jim Price and the east with Mister Joe Diaz and the south with Mister Bustamante and they have similar zoning. Our property is nine point twenty-five acres and we are rezoning parcel area to two point ninety-seven of an acre. We have on our plans to install a buffer zone in order to not disturb our neighbor Mister Price. We have in the project to install all kinds of utility on the property and share expensive with the adjusting owners to improve access to sewer and water and electrical and the city in Nogales gave me a will serve letter for sewer and water. Any question of the members of the board and I will more than happy to answer.
Okay, any questions from the, from the members?
Yeah, more, more of a curiosity for me, the electrical, have you struck a deal with Unisource?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I, I.
I understood water and sewer by the city, right?
Yes. See, I, I talked to the. See, I looked on it and.
Okay, yeah, well, okay, let's see that.
Roberto.
Anything else you might wanna add then?
No, I am. Well, also.
You can see.
Yeah.
Have the members, we give the paperwork that was submitted by Mister Tapia.
Yes.
Mister Tapia will make a presentation for us right now to get a better understanding of the project.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. So based on the requirements of to resone a property from a specific land use, like in this example is a, a single-family residential, S F R twelve, to industrial, we have to notify the legal requirements by state law. So, so we did the sign notification and we also sent letters to the surrounding property owners and so what, twenty-eight letters we sent to all the property owners surrounding this property. It's part of the requirements to notify this neighborhood and also put them in the newspaper. The rezoning request has been submitted to the city of Nogales. As you can see there, the, those are the days that we did to, to send the letters on November sixteen and, um, and also in my glasses. By, by U S mail and then in Nogales International Newspaper, we did it also on November twenty-first. Other postings that we did, City Hall here in this building by the library and also in the Palace Works Building, we notified as a posting requirements. This is a letter that we sent to, to the neighborhood asking them or mention them to, case was submitted to the city to resound this subject property. Just information about the applicant, the legal owner is Mister Israel and Claudia Puig and he's representing himself in this case. Legal description is a parcel number one, oh, three, dash, zero, nine, dash, zero, three, eight. Even though they have a nine point twenty, twenty-nine acres parcel, their, their intent is only to resound two point ninety-seven acres and I will join in a minute in a map. So this is the location of the proposed zoning site, two point nine, seven acres. As you can see, Patagonia Highway runs on the southeast and going northeast and they have an, an entrance from Patagonia. The, from this, it goes all the way to the property. That's the intent to, to have the access to the, to the highway. This is the location map again, the whole, the overall parcel is nine point twenty-eight acres, but the intent is only to resound this portion. This is an area next to an existing light industrial zoning classification. Yes.
Just an observation on, on the submitted new storage project, twenty-seven, or twenty-two, zero, zero, one. On the upper right corner of the, of the previous. Yeah, slide. It shows all constructions shall conform the fa, to the following codes and it's, it's written twenty-twelve international residential code. Just as an observation, it's gonna be industrial, so it has to be, I think, be, be corrected to read the building code.
Exactly, yeah, yeah, thank you, Mister Chair. Yeah, you're right, and also we had the, the building code, we had twenty eighteen as well. This is only this location map, once the, an official application for building permit, that's gonna be a requirement to, to provide a kind of information on the building permit application in the drawings. Thank you for. As part of the rezoning classification as well, we have to conform through the general plan. In this case, the, this type of application confront with the, the growth area element of the general plan, twenty twenty vision. The, the, the growth area element sets the framework necessary to provide a solution to overcome the multiplicity of challenges, maximize the opportunities, increase the long-term viability and secure the fiscal vitality of Nogales. So this is ideal information because, as you know, that area that Mister Puig's property is, the terrain is kind of difficult for single-family homes there. So that's a challenge to, to build homes. But on the southeast area of the property, they can use a property for light industrial. So it's an opportunity, it's a challenge on the property, but also an opportunity by doing the rezoning, so they can actually use a property for something. In this case will be the proposal is for light industrial for a, a storage building for their business and as well for office space if they need it. But that will be the proposal for light industrial. So they confront with the general plan. Now the zoning, the zoning classification on this area, where I'm pointing on the screen, that's, that's their property. Right now is single-family, S F R twelve, lots, twelve thousand square feet lots. But you can see next, next to it, the area they proposing to be resoned to light industrial is already light industrial on the southeast and on the, on the east, all these areas already light industrial. So in a way, they're only continuing, their proposal actually matches, conforms with the surroundings. Again, just comparing the existing zonings surrounding the desired property. You have a light industrial to the southeast and east. Then you have single-family zoning onto the west and north. Multi-family, a little farther, farther to the west. But the, the actual subject site is next to light industrial. Just to mention, just briefly, the, the surroundings. Like I mentioned, the single-family homes to the nor, north and west is undeveloped land. Light industrial to the east and southeast and also you have commercial businesses there. Oh, something happened.
There was another one. No, no. Much damage. There you go.
Okay. So about that. And a multi-family residential to the southwest, I mentioned. This is a view from the top of the property, looking southeast. You can see there are some businesses, I think it's a property that they have a, like a car business there. So we're looking southeast view on the top. And you can see the terrain. And this is the, the access road that they have existing. It goes to the, going, going north.
May I ask a question at this point?
Sure.
Is that Price Hill Road?
Yes, Price Hill.
It, it, it's named, so do I assume that it's a city-maintained road?
No, that's a private access. Yes, it's an easement, yes, that's correct.
Okay.
Mister Tapia?
Yes.
Observation, under, under the same premise of, of the road, just a recommendation when the time comes because we might either approve or not with conditions, year conditions, complying with the codes and all that. Just to keep in mind that, that that road is gonna be also used for fire apparatus access road and it shall withstand the, the weights of the, of the fire apparatus road, the construction. That, that's, that's one of the, that's one of the things that, that I have note on here.
Yeah, thank you, Mister Chair, because, good point, because during the pre-application process that we did with the property owner, the fire department was present and they mentioned that.
This is driveway that Jimmy Price, who casa, they own me that Odette?
Yep.
They put in the middle, my ass, my property.
Uh huh, oh. Well, the one on the left side is a graded, that's the, the gym, that's the Price Hill Road on the left?
Yeah, that's a private easement.
Yeah, I, I get it, so but my question is, is that, is that, is that what Jim and Odette Price used to go to their house? That's my question, that's it.
Good, thank you.
Yeah.
So, so with that being said, it's, it's only fair to say that Jim and Odette feel satisfied with the fire safety issue of getting an emergency vehicle to their house.
If we, if we wait for a little bit, Mister Tapia will present the letters, one of the letters that, that we received as commissioners is a letter signed by Jim Price and Mister Tapia might wanna read that.
I'm just curious, it's just the. They conform, in other words, the road conforms, right?
Yeah.
Yes, and it's part of the fire department review once they submit a permit. That will be a requirement by the fire department. Yeah, just to mention the, the letters because Mister Puig, Israel, he actually talked to all the neighbors before he submitted the application. So he is, he did a lot of homework. So we got ten letters of supporting his proposal as you can see on the attachment on the, on the report.
No, I, I'm, I'm very satisfied with the report, it's more than, it's, it's.
Yeah.
Since he brought up the road, I'm just curious, you know, I mean, the road has satisfied Jim and Odette for three decades, right?
Yes.
Yeah, go ahead.
Ah, we're, we're planning, I get the permit, this goes through, chip and seal.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
The road.
Yeah. Improvement, improvements.
Joe Diaz, but not Joe Diaz, his son is the owner of that property.
Right.
Minion are gonna do his part.
Yeah.
We go have an act, so it will be that much better.
Well, that's all good and dandy, I just don't know, I, I don't know the legalities of it, right?
Yeah, yeah, that will be between the property owners.
Would you continue?
Yeah, thank you. Yes, at this point will be a recommendation from the planning staff. The staff is recommending approval of the sound change based on the following criteria being met. So light industrial is recommended within existing properties and due to this subject site's terrain, the proposed land use is more practical. The request meets the intent of the Nogales general plan, specifically in growth area element of the city of Nogales general plan vision twenty twenty. As I mentioned earlier, it meets those, those two conditions as part of the review. So at this point, should the planning and zoning commission elect to take affirmative action on this request, the following conditions of approval should be, should apply. Meet those side development and building permit requirements for side plan and building permits. Because the planning commission will recommend to city council, if I prove a city council, the next step will be to submit for a side plan and then to, for building permits. If they have to do some grading, they also may need to have a, a grading permit. So there will be three different steps, side plan, grading permit and then finally will be the building permit for any buildings on the site. So if approved, the commission will provide a recommendation to the city council. That's all I have, thank you.
Commissioners, may I entertain a motion for approval with conditions or not to approve? Aye. No, no, what, I need a motion.
You need a motion, oh, I make a motion that we approve this, this request.
Second. Motion by Bobby, second by Jesus. Roll call, Mister Tapia? Please.
Mike Lopez.
Approved. One question. If, if the commissioners approve this, does this thing has, still has to go to the council members and the mayor?
Yes, that's correct, yes, that's correct, my, the planning commission recommends to city council, yes.
Okay, all right, yeah, approved.
Jesus Loreno, Lorenzo Marquez.
Aye.
Jesus Gomez.
Approved with conditions.
Bobby Estango.
Aye.
Passes.
Approval of the consideration and possible action of rezoning request application for property owners Israel and Claudia Puig of parcel one, oh, three, zero, nine, zero, three, eight, located at two, zero, five, East Price Hill Road to rezone a portion, two point nine acres up from nine point two, nine acres of undeveloped land from single-family residential, dash, twelve, to light industrial has been approved to be submitted to city council for their review.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Now next, future agenda items.
Future agenda meetings.
Yes, I have, right now we're doing, we're reviving the zoning development code update and we interviewing a consultant tomorrow morning and hopefully we're gonna set up meetings with you to start the process again. The intent is for us to complete the zoning update by, by the end of June twenty-four. Not to start from scratch, but take advantage what you already had done in the reviews and the consultant is gonna take over from that point forward. I'm gonna provide all that information to them and they're gonna continue with the process.
Six month window, huh?
Yes, so, so it'll be good. They mentioned that we have one applicant that they said they can do it in six months. So, because it's already worth done, so it'll be good.
Are we still reviewing some of the development code for new additions or deletions?
Well, the consultant and myself and my staff are gonna go through the, the existing reviews already done Well, the consultant, and myself, and my staff are gonna go through the, the existing reviews already done, and see we can, we need to go back again, and make some changes, or just let it like that and continue. But my intent is to go back and review what is already done. If we, we have new recommendations from you or from the stakeholders, then we can do it now, during the next six months.
Anything else, Mr. Tapia?
No, that's all I have from my side, thank you.
Being 1800 hours with 02 minutes, we meeting has our journey.